People watching behind you?
Yeah.
Okay. Obama means, yeah. It's under that video. Pardon? This is solar.
With a solar?
Yeah.
Get a grant they have to pocket it back.
Oh.
So, so, net, at least the nineties somewhere. Here the cost of heating. Thousand is for recycling.
And that's only one portion.
I can hear that big roar.
Which was more than half a ton, it seems like.
Yeah.
The, uh, why I want to face is I can't do this for you.
Then do the record.
Then we'll have to work, uh, contractor, the core electric, that will help. We need to talk to maybe somebody at Paterson. Big that off. I talked with Patrick in the day. You know, what happened?
Motion, please, first. Maybe we should get started first.
I use it so choose to stand for the watch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting to order with everyone present. Uh, the meeting is being recorded, so if you so choose not to be recorded, you have the option of leaving. Uh, first item on agenda this morning is managing public health faculty, clarification of what? All right.
So I understand that there is some concern about home care that we are providing. And so, just to give a little history, uh, back in, I think it was 21, it's part of our quarterly meetings with our local community health consultants from the state. They laid out a plan, a five-year plan for us to, uh, kind of change the way that local public health, uh, service contract is going to be managed or utilized. And so they did this because in state fiscal year 21, of the approximately seven million dollars that were allocated just to local public health, but local public health agencies, three point two million dollars was used to provide home care services for just over four thousand twenty-one people here in the state. Uh, those community health consultants didn't see that that was an appropriate use of the funds. They said that there's actually other places, uh, that can provide the home care as far as the funding there. And so, they said, well, there's Title 19 and there's county tax. Right? So those, those two got put into place there. And so, in that five-year plan, we were able to start with 100% of our local public health services contract, about fifty-five thousand dollars and change. Um, all the way down to in FY 27, so a couple of years from now, we won't be able to use any of those funds to provide for home care. Okay? So, when we went through our decertification process, um, let me back up there. Um, at the time, we were 50/50. So 50% of our dollars were being used for local public health, uh, as far as home care, and the other 50% were being used for public health services. So we were doing a good job already. Uh, we continued to follow that trend, and so in FY 26, coming up here in July, um, we can't use more than 25% of the funds. Looking at how can we make sure that we're not even using that 25%? Because we know in 27, we kind of fall off, so we have to make some adjustments. So after that meeting, I came back and I shared that big picture with my staff, uh, which, of course, staff has changed now, and so I shared, um, with our current staff, the ballpark, what, what's happening here, that this is going to change what looks meaningful and what seems to be an appropriate amount for us to be making some, some charges for, for services. So, in the meantime, we've already done one sliding fee scale adjustment. We know we're going to have to do another adjustment. So we've talked about this just briefly at our board meeting, saying, we have to do this. It's coming back to our agency and, and working with our staff and working with these clients. So, what you have in front of you, um, is a graph of people that we are, some that we are billing to the grant. So, the blue, people in blue, are the clients that we are billing to that local public health services contract. What we've done is from July through January, because I've been able to bill for all that time. We bill time, not visits. That's how it has to be recorded. Um, I have a client with the number of home care aid hours and the number of nursing hours for each of those people. You can see that that's a grant revenue, ends right now, it's about thirteen thousand dollars. By the time we're all done, it's going to be closer to seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand dollars. That revenue shows up in the local public health services contract under healthy aging revenue. It does not show up under home care aid service fees or nursing service fees. The nursing service fee, the home care aid fees, the homemaker, when that listed on the revenue worksheet, that was a private paid. And so the private paid people are the people in the green here, okay? And so what we've done is to indicate, not necessarily what they're paying, but, uh, people are paying, we have a couple of people who are on sliding fee scale, and most of them are paying 100%. Um, and so for a home care aide, fifty dollars an hour. For a homemaker, it is thirty-five dollars an hour, okay? And so those figures are based on cost reports that have been done. Um, so we, we've got some real data that shows that. Again, I identified the number of hours that we are spending, as well as the frequency that we're spending with each of these people, as well as that private pay revenue. So for the home care aide, uh, yeah, I know it's a little low, it's 2100, but homemaker is 6200. So for a total of 8400. That's just from July through December. Um, the interesting thing to share with all of you is that all of your districts have been impacted. Okay? We have billed everybody in the blue, um, because all of you have somebody or somebodies, hopefully you have two people, um, in your district that we are providing the services. For the green, the private paid people, again, all of your districts have been impacted. All of you people are getting, uh, services. This past week alone, uh, and I think it's an anomaly, but we received four homemaker referrals. And this is not a main service. Homemaking is cleaning the bathrooms and the kitchens, uh, it's, it's helping change the bed sheets, it's maybe helping get the laundry going. These are people who are actually wanting twice a week, two time, or two hours a time. We don't have capacity to do that at this point in time. We've got capacity to do about one hour once a week for people, and that's not enough, right? And so, that's where those dollars are coming from. When we did our decertification process, so one of the things that we tried to do was to find homes for all these people. In particular, the blue, people in blue, that were during a local public health contract. Uh, when we reached out to the hospital, because they have a home health program here in the county, they said they need a payer, or they're going to have, have private pay. So these are individuals in blue that do not have a payer. They don't qualify for Title 19. Now maybe when some, some things adjust, because there's, they're looking at doing some changes with medication, maybe some of those people will, we don't know. But we do a, a financial worksheet on each of these people yearly. Those people don't qualify, they make it a little too much for Title 19. And I know at least two of them, if not three of them, go to Wuhan. So, they also don't have, just because they don't qualify for the Title 19, they also don't have the 200-plus dollars for a nurse to go in and do the medication setup. And that's really what we're doing with the people here in the blue. Nurses are going in, doing medication setups. Um, we're monitoring, they have, uh, they're on blood monitors, so we have to monitor what that rate is. Um, and, you know, sure, they could go to a pharmacy, but they're going to pay exorbitant amounts to have their medication set up, they're not going to be adjusted appropriately. And then there's not going to be a nurse to put eyes on these people. One of these people I know has a brain injury, and then some significant physical disabilities. Another one has cardiac history and some, um, some challenges there. Uh, somebody else, just is needing home care aid services. That person, uh, was actually in the nursing home, had fallen at home, went to the nursing home for rehab, and is now back home. That person is 99 years old. Okay? Well fortunately, we grow them old here in the county, but it's also kind of a problem, right? Um, that individual also has shared, I wouldn't be able to be calm unless I see that. Okay? So that's huge. Um, somebody else has some mental health issues, um, and I don't remember, oh, the other one, uh, has some mental health concerns as well. So we do see Kevin Orange, that we do have somebody's coming into the office monthly for an injection, okay? That is somebody with a mental health issue. Um, there is no place for people who have those injections to get those injections. They can't go to the pharmacy, they can't go to the doctor's office. They need somebody, we are that somebody. Public health is the gap filler for all of these services. And so, um, you know, again, when we went through the decertification process, we said, what are some things that we can still offer, that we can still bring in some revenue for, for the county, for us? And so we said, look at homemaking. If that is a non-fill service, and so we've been able to do that. Uh, we just were approved in December, starting in January, to be a home and community-based services waiver homemaker provider. We've got a couple of pending referrals sitting out there to provide those services. Right now, we're just wishy-washy county, but as I shared when I talked with you about our budget, um, we've gotten calls from other counties wondering if we'd go there. I don't have capacity to do that, we'd have to just take care of this. But it goes to show that the need is out there, right? And so, um, you know, in our budget request, we put that we would, we really would like to have that second part-time homemaker, because our homemaker, as part-time, she's already got a full schedule. Okay? And we don't have a whole lot of space in which to deal with all these other referrals, all these other people who are needing your services. Our home care aide works 35 hours a week, which is considered full-time. Okay? Uh, so, they're busy all the time, they don't have time to sit around twiddling their thumbs. They are go-go-go-go from the time they start, uh, and are on the clock till the time that they are done going home. Right? Um, Northeast Iowa area agency on aging, uh, sometimes it's a referral source for us. Uh, I know that they had given us a couple of referrals for, uh, one was for home care aide and the other was for homemaker. And so trying to work all those routes too. So they're a good resource for us as well, good partner for us. They don't have the staff to go out and do the direct service that we do. They have to coordinate some of those services. So, uh, you know, one of the homemaker people that we have, uh, she has some other requests, and so I need to contact NEI3A to say, uh, who is our contact for this? Do you have a contract with anybody who provides that service? So we do work hand in hand with them. I don't know if that helps to clarify any questions. Um, but we do know that we do need to address how to, how these people currently in the blue are going to start paying for some type of service. Um, you know, if that's even five dollars a visit for some people, that's going to be a lot of money in the month, right? And so those are difficult conversations that we need to have, um, with ourselves and with us as an agency, but even with those clients and their families. Because we don't have the magic bullet. You know, there's, there's other agencies that are trying to figure this one out too. Uh, do we go to, again, do we change that sliding fee scale, or do we go to a set fee? Nobody knows.
Was the seven, 17 to 18 number, the projected at the end of the fiscal year, in the board? You said it's at almost thirteen thousand, right?
Seventeen to eighteen thousand, that would be?
At the end of the fiscal year.
At the end of the fiscal year for the people in blue.
Okay. And that's for a homemaker and ORP?
It's, no, that is just for home care aide or nursing. Homemaker is not billable to the local public health services contract. Home care aide, somebody that helps with the shower.
Okay.
Hands on personal pairs, yeah.
How much is your public health contract?
Um, it is about fifty-five thousand, that's been a pretty static number. Um, way back in the day, we used to have public health nursing dollars, and we used to have home care dollars. And seriously, we would have over a hundred thousand dollars, and that was spent taking care of well over ninety-some odd people.
So what came up last week, I'm just looking at my notes from last week, it was reported to be 225,000, give or take a little bit, home healthcare cost and revenue around 15.
Well, the revenue is going to look different, remember, because the revenue from the local public health contract is shown in revenue for the healthy aging. And we don't break that out to put that under home care aide, nursing service fees.
So how much is that?
That's about seventeen.
That's seventeen? Of, of revenue? Is that correct?
Correct. Twenty-eighty thousand.
Seventeen thousand, out of the, then where does the fifty-five thousand come into? Come in?
That's all the healthy aging grants. We, we cannot, if we separate it out, it's going to make a mess of the books.
Balance of it goes just to public health.
Just to public health. And what percentage of our, of the operation is public health, and what percentage is home healthcare? Or aids?
Well, the home, the home care aide is doing strictly, um, home care. Uh, our nurses are doing some both, and our homemaker is doing homemaker, which is considered public health.
Homemaker is considered public health?
It is.
Is this true of, of our surrounding counties?
So our surrounding counties don't have homemaker services. Um, but I will tell you that other counties who have become decertified, like us, they also provide some homemaker services, they also do medication assistance. And so we don't have those kind of, um, those services in the surrounding counties around us, because they're all certified.
So home healthcare, home healthcare aides and homemakers are all considered public health? Or is that public health and, and private health? Issues like your, your target from, for your board from the state is providing services to the public for public health. And when you do provide services for private situations, that's not public health, there has to be commensurate dollars that offsets that, from what I read out of, out of the state chapter. How does that fit with all of what we're doing?
So, uh, again, there's other agencies who are doing just this. They are providing the medication assistance we're doing in the personal pairs, because there isn't another payer. So you can't just drop these people, let's abandon it, okay? There is not an agency that's going to pick up these people, they, it doesn't exist, right? And so, how do you, how do you take care of those people? It's going to cost us way more money in the long run if they're not being seen, then they get hospitalized, and then they end up into a, a long-term facility. So it will cost much more money, take a lot more resources in which to provide the services for the people.
It sounds like that needs to be a state law change, other than the county's taxpayer responsibility to fill in the gap for that. So I don't, the justification has to come from the county taxpayer that next month takes out that checkbook and writes a check to pay their property tax, and they always ask us, why is our property tax so high? So, give me an answer.
We don't, here's the thing. When you take a look at all of the dollars that we utilize, and take a look at the, the number of people in the county, we're only about twenty-some odd dollars per capita for helicopter services. So, the fact that we only have these few people makes sense, right? Again, they need services, you can't just abandon them.
And these aren't the only people you're serving.
These are the only people.
This doesn't include like the foot clinic?
No.
Vaccination?
No, no. This is just the home care, because that was the question. It was the home care. So these are the people that are receiving home care. Not very many people that you can see, right? But the people that we're providing those services, it's minimal care that they're getting, right? But they're getting darn good care.
So what's, um, I guess the question, and you said the hospital could provide these services. Well, if somebody paid them, could provide.
Yep.
What would their charge be?
It's well over two hundred dollars in nursing benefits.
And what's our cost?
Ours is one eighty.
Your, your cost is one eighty, is that what I, is that what you said?
And there's this little over two hundred?
I don't know specifically, but last time you was well over two hundred dollars. Many agencies, many hospital business agencies are pushing two fifty.
Yeah, I'm, I just.
Yep.
Interesting, so, well, what if we?
Any.
With them and paid them what they want, but then we didn't have to keep.
And you, you really, we sent all of the paying people to the hospital, there is nothing to contract with them.
If we paid them.
They need to pay them. Right now, I have a billing source. It's going to cost you a lot more money to provide those services to pay the hospital. Because they're also not going to be able to provide the home care services at the frequency that these people need. We do that.
So I just want to make, like, that we're looking at client one, client two, client three, client four, client five. I'm looking at this as maybe James and Allison and Steve and Wayne and whoever. These are people.
These are people who have a name, they have a face, they have, they all have family.
Right. These are people, and these are some of the most vulnerable people in our community. And I'd like to ask again, and I've asked this question before of this whole community, who are we? Right? Who are we? And I'd like to believe that we are a community that cares for the most vulnerable in our population, right?
Do you, do you know, on the average, how many visits per year? I know that's a tough one to pull out.
It is, because we bill it in hours, but that's how we bill the grant, we don't bill it in visits.
You could kind of, you're these show at two times a week, or one seventy-two weeks, or whatever, yeah.
Of course, sometimes people get hospitalized for whatever reason, and so sometimes those hours will, will obviously change, right?
So we got a total of, for one home healthcare aide and one full time, we got thirty-four hundred and twenty-six hours they turned in roughly. And we're, we got six hundred and thirty-two hours of, of home healthcare time. So that's twenty-eight hundred hours for the year that is accounted for in home healthcare. The two full, one full and one part-time. I mean, I'm just putting.
I think he's saying that they're, they're working more hours than you're billing. Yeah. So where are those other hours going?
We got twenty-eight hundred hours on the counter for work.
No, they're all accounted for. So, our home care aide is providing services at this frequency for the people in blue that we built in the grant, and home care aide for the people in the green, okay? So the others, a little bit of charting, there's a little bit of travel. Um, but remember, they are working thirty-five hours. And so that looks a little different than everybody else's schedule sometimes, for homemaker. Um, trying to keep that, obviously, less than twenty-eight hours at this point in time. So, and there's more, there's, like I said, there's more referrals coming out there. So, uh, certainly there's some meetings that our staff need to sit in on. Um, but they are, they're busy. Again, they're not just settling, twiddling their thumbs. There's different training and education that we have to do. All of that is very important to make sure, sure that we're providing the appropriate care for our staff, uh, and for our residents of the county. So, yeah.
I don't disagree that we need to take care of these deep, but I do wonder if sitting down with the hospital and seeing if they would move out of contract, what the cost differential would be between what we have to pay our own people as compared to what they could do it for.
So, again, they don't have the home care aid services or the homemaker services. They don't. Uh, one of the private paid people, so one of the people in green, um, they transitioned to the hospital, and the family said, mm-mm, they, the hospital can't provide the services, and so we're coming back to you. So they are privately paying for it. They were able to afford that though as well.
You did a survey for us a while back of the surrounding counties, Ben. Do you recall what, what we've, what you found when you checked with those surrounding counties that were, were bringing up our hospital?
Yeah, so most of them are contracting with their hospital. I don't know which services they're providing, because Chris says they don't find some of the services we do, so. Um, but it was in the, some of them were as low as a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty thousand, they pay the hospital to do their public health services, and some are in the two fifty, three hundred thousand range, but.
But when I recall, when I did the average of those four counties, it was less than a hundred and fifty thousand. Every. Wait, excuse me, I'm talking. And if the state has mandated through our regulations and code that certain things are to be provided, I understand that. But it appears that these other counties are providing, they may not be providing at the same service level that you are, but they don't, they are not, and I'm sure that they also have some of those same people in that same boat. And that becomes a family, that's a family issue, and if they don't have family, I understand that, I don't have family either. That lives in Winnishe County or anywhere near.
You know, I don't think it's fair to assume they're providing it. Maybe we should make sure they are providing it.
That's, we can check on that. I agree.
You know, we have questions for us at the six-county meetings. For those supervisors to get educated when they come to the meeting, so we understand we're providing more than what they are.
That's valid, that's valid.
Because that would really justify the extra cost.
Often what happens with the six-county meetings, if you ask that question, you'll get an uninformed answer.
That's why I was.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
I think it's.
Prepare them to come to the meeting educated also.
We could also call the regional hospitals and get the answer directly. I doubt that they're getting the same services that we're providing for the public health department. And again, I ask the question, who are we as a community? That's my biggest question is who are we? Who do we want to be? What quality of life do we want in this corner of the state? We always have to compare ourselves to, probably they're maybe doing a lot less for their, I'd rather not. I'd rather do the best thing we can to.
That's fine. We can be benevolent on the taxpayer dollar. You're absolutely right, Shirley. But we also have to answer to the taxpayers.
I'm answering to the taxpayers who do care about their neighbors and they do care about their family members.
I think we need to get some clarification.
It might be even comparable to, okay, there's a county road and one person lives at the end of it and we have to maintain that road because ten thousand dollars a year for one person to be able to get down. Oh, I mean, that's that, you know, I mean.
That's just, that becomes a state mandate.
Well.
And code.
Yeah, but is that.
Off the county road.
But we have residents in the county who do need care and if there's no other outcome. I think it's our obligation to see that we can get that care for them. Whether it's us providing it or finding an agency that could provide it.
Any of us have questions, we're welcome to contact you.
So can we, if we make a decision, are we going to do more fact-finding?
I think we should.
Can, who's gonna be in charge of that? Is that something you could do, call, see what those other?
I can do it. Whether or not you'll believe it.
I would believe it. I just, you know, what are the other surrounding counties that are paying the hospital? What are they getting and who's covering the other things if in fact they are?
Do you need help with that? You have any help there? I'll let you know.
I would, I mean, I just, it would be great to have more information. And maybe further conversation with the hospital since it is when is she counting?
But my point I'm bringing still, we got six-hundred-and-thirty-two hours we're billing out for this one and a half time person. And there's twenty-seven-hundred-and-ninety-four hours still not accounted for. That, that's the point I'm bringing. Do we need, can that one person do, because there's, I mean, that's twenty-eight-hundred hours that is unaccounted for in a one and a half person for the year of ser- for services, yeah. That's the point I'm bringing up. Where, where does that other twenty-eight-hundred hours of work go to? I mean, granted, you gotta go to a meeting, your classes, that's a couple times a year, but not twenty-eight-hundred.
Can you share your?
That's the point.
Share your math process with the.
Add these hours surely. Add all them hours up in this column.
So remember.
Take it times two. It's six, approximately six-thirty-two.
So these twelve people that you've listed, you're the ones that we are servicing and with home healthcare or with the, with these services, that's these twelve people, is that correct? And we've got, so the reimbursement off of those two is total is going to be seventeen thousand on the upper groups and that's the lower, the lower total would be
About roughly thirty-two thousand.
About thirty-two thousand for the year. And the mileage for, the mileage for that in your budget is seventeen, is fifteen thousand per, per mileage. So we're, we're really, we're really upside down.
I mean, I'm just having a hard time trying to put the whole dollar mile. I mean, granted, we could, yeah. That's, that's the point I'm trying to bring up.
So we're hoping that the mileage won't be as much. Um, you know, that was kind of a, a crystal ball. What does this look like? Now that we are approved as a waiver, where do all these people live? We don't know. Okay, they could be people down in Castalia. Um, and so if we have somebody who's from Decorah, it's gonna take a long time and more miles to get down to Castalia. And so this is where we take a look at our efficiency with mileage and with grouping some of those visits. We've got somebody in Oshin and Castalia. Well, you know what? It makes more sense to kind of do those two in that same school so that we can reduce the mileage. So we take a look at all of those things when we're doing our scheduling.
Just trying to get the Mars question, like if you had someone that they spend an hour of time on the road to get there and back, that doesn't count towards these hours that are billed.
This is direct service.
Yes, but that's.
Service time.
That's gonna make up a part of what you're saying.
Yeah.
We're paying the employee those hours even though we aren't billing someone for those hours.
That's a lot of hours of driving time. That's twenty-eight-hundred dollars to drive in time.
Okay, well, thank you. Look forward to your part.
The clock's at twelve-thirty, so I don't want to call.
I know, okay.
That's why I put them on.
Yeah. We have a shroud to hang on this night.
Thanks, Kristen. Uh, next up on the agenda, Brian Hinker, your partner in critical illness policy and policy insurance plan design. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning.
Trying a little better this Monday than last.
Yes, a little bit, yeah. Thanks for your flexibility. After our, our last meeting, we, we talked about doing like the, the program that had the wellness benefit and where I was, I'm happy to report. Um, and I've confirmed Reliance Standard, who we have other, other products with. It's like, like I've got a good relationship with, with them and I, the reply from them when the quote came back from our rep was, wow, this is a boring loser for the company. It's a, it's a hundred and eight dollars is the annual premium for this, this critical illness benefit. Um, it pays back out a hundred-dollar wellness benefit directly to the employee for a variety of, of services. So costs a hundred eight, we get a hundred dollars back. We're going down that path like other, some of our other clients have of encouraging preventative visits, those sorts of things to, to get your wellness or start getting those things documented. We can with, with Lynn, we can kind of formalize that, how we want to do that, help people with the claims filing process. The other, the other, I would say, pretty big highlights of the program with that hundred and eight dollar, that, that covers a five-thousand-dollar benefit. So um, if you have invasive cancer, the employee would get five thousand dollars. Uh, Alzheimer's, stroke, heart attack, kidney failure, those are all five-thousand-dollar benefits. Organ failure. Uh, contained cancer is a twenty-five percent benefit. Twelve fifty. Heart disease, a twenty-five percent benefit. There's various levels of, of autism and I'll go into the kids, the kid benefit. With the, with the employee paid portion, the, the child benefit is automatically included. Uh, up to two kids can also get the hundred-dollar benefit back. So if you were a, an employee with, with two children, that hundred and eight-dollar premium will get you three hundred dollars back in the wellness benefit with relative ease. Um, and then also they've got that, that benefit for the, for the kid, you know, if the kid's developed one of those conditions too, they would get, have money to help pay for their, their deductible. So um, it is eight, until age twenty-six, you do not have to be a full-time student. So I, I do think that this could be a, uh, you know, e- everything costs money, but relatively inexpensive and, and potentially using our, our side fund to encourage that wellness behavior on the front end. Now with an, now with a monetary incentive that we've, you know, you can talk till you're blue in the face about people getting their preventative stuff done, but if there's a hundred-dollar bill being waived and or three hundred dollars if you've got two kids, I think we can get, start moving that direction to hopefully address things. On the front end, you catch one or two conditions early, you're, we're saving money in our, our partial fund and our, our health plan overall, so. I was, I was happy to see that. Um, also the employees would have the ability to buy up. Um, so that five thousand would be company paid or county paid. Um, depending on their age, um, they would be, they would be able to buy up. Well, that, that would actually be for spouses. They, the employee could continue to buy up with that hundred and, for every five thousand dollars of benefit, they can pay another hundred and eight dollars a month out of their check. So if you say.
A hundred and eighty a year.
Hundred and eighty a year, yeah, yep. So I imagine we'll have some people that maybe you've got a family history of some of those diseases or things that they would they would potentially buy up. You're, they can buy it on their spouse as well. That is a.
Age-based.
Yeah, age, age-based. Uh, for our younger employees, very inexpensive. Under, under fifty, forty to forty-nine is sixty-four dollars and eighty cents a year. And that, that too would qualify the, the spouse in that age bracket for the, the hundred dollars too. So I think our big thing will be education to, to our people to say, you know, gosh, why, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you do this to have that, that five-thousand-dollar benefit if, if something bad happened? But you're gonna, all you have to do is fill out this claim form and get, get one of these wellness exams done and.
It's just like a voluntary supplemental insurance.
It, it would be for the spouse. Um, in this, this proposal, part of the reason that it is so, so really inexpensive annually is that it's county, county paid. For the, just for the employee and they wrapped in the, the kids, two of the kids, two, two, uh, up to two kids.
There are institutions that your premium goes up if you don't get your, your physical every other year and your blood test every year and stuff like that, so. And that goes back to them having a blood test. It's at the walk-in level.
Yep.
They're just trying to set that up.
So, uh, there's more ways than just paying a hundred-dollar bill. It's like your premiums are going up twenty-five percent or ten percent or whatever if that's.
Without a doubt, I, I do like this step two. I think I've mentioned before, I, I think at some point we will likely be with ISAC. They've got a very similar program in place where they wrap, they wrap this, this type of benefit in with their health insurance. You essentially don't have a choice to deny it. They've seen the, they've seen the dollars on the backend where they're willing to invest. We're gonna give you this because we know X amount of people are gonna take advantage of it for the hundred bucks and they're, they've kind of got the data on the backend. So I do think it's probably not a bad habit for us to start if we're gonna end, end with ISAC at, at some point, they've got a five percent premium kind of a differential or you can never say rebate in, in insurance worlds, but do five percent discount if they've got certain percentages of sixty percent of your people get a physical and various things. So I, I do like us building to that and having the, having some data that, I mean, when, when we move to ISAC, like I, I think we will at some point, we're gonna, we'll have a almost a multi-year runway if we have this in place to, okay, next year we get a three percent increase, but we're going down five percent because we've got our wellness in place and we're confident we're gonna hit that number is, is good.
Ryan, you have any idea how many of our employees actually have a annual physical and a blood test?
They don't give us that data. Yeah.
But we'll know, will we know with this, how many hundred-dollar benefits they pay out? So we'll get, that'll be a good way to collect.
Yeah.
It's like, we don't know, other than we know the hundred of our hundred and thirty employees got a hundred-dollar benefits. So we, now we have a.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that is one, you know, I don't wanna keep beating on the ISAC model, but they, they're, they're self-funded as a whole. So they have better access to claims data. And at, at some point when we're, if, if and when we're with them, that, we will have more data that way. But.
This doesn't necessitate us setting up like a walk-in clinic for employees onsite. They, but that would be where some of the savings that Marcus was referencing earlier that if we do that, we could save money on the expense for them to get those tests. And so that would help maybe encourage.
Yes. And I know, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna speak for WinMed. I know that there are, I think staffing-wise, that it's been more difficult for them to do those onsite clinics, but, but through organization, I think that's definitely something we want to look into.
Help people to help with.
Yeah. That's, that's entirely possible. And that, that will save dollars for sure.
I mean, that would save part of our insurance fund. That could save a couple, three hundred dollars per person that utilize the walk-in clinic that we're providing onsite versus having it done through there.
A- and I envision that, at that day or doing that, we would fill out John Smith's pa- you know, the Reliance Standard claim form, like come in, get your blood draw, we're doing your paperwork for you to get your hundred bucks. And that, that isn't.
That's basically how they do it at the school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you don't, I know that Stephanie does that at the school and so it just happens all kind of together.
Yep, yep. Well, every once in a while have some check issues, but we work that on the backend and so-and-so didn't get their check sent. Or you know, it comes in an undisclosed envelope, so you throw it away. Those little things, but.
What, uh, so we talked about going to ISAC. What's, what are we saving by not being with ISAC right now?
We're a little, we're, we're more right now standing on our own. We're in a pretty good period health-wise with our claims, so the, the.
We've got two years in a row where Wellmark has not increased our premium, the high, the high, high proportion of premium.
Yeah, and, and ISAC, the, the, the strength in ISAC is longer, longer-term stability. Really on your bad year, you're gonna see less of an increase and you could argue on your good year, instead of zero, we might get three, three or four percent. So it's, it kind of ebbs and flows. They've got a great history though. I, I think the key to these associations is, is people not flowing in and out. We, we left, we left an association because we had three, four years of, of helping this smaller pool. There's only roughly a thousand people in our, our former pool and it wasn't really growing. And they were letting very small cities into it, which I disagreed with on, on the number side, like if you have a, a city with fifteen people compared to a county with one-twenty-five, who's putting the money in? And it was hard to get, in my opinion, we, we work with cities too. You, 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 you think we don't get a lot of data on one-twenty-five, you get nothing on, on fifteen. So those cities are going, oh, so-and-so's got this condition, let's see if we can get in. Oh, we got in, great. Well, that doesn't help when it's your county. Uh, but, but ISAC is so so similarly based, you know, that, that it, it is just counties. And counties have similar, similar makeups with job titles and um, conditions that I've been sold on them. We'll have two group, two, two counties that I work with independently this year. I think maybe one just voted to, to likely move to, to the ISAC plan.
So we'll, the, the idea is that we'll stay on our own until some, if we have a bad year or two in a row that they do try to put a bigger increase, that's when we go and.
And yeah, and honestly, back to this, if we get, if we accomplish what I think we can to be able to go into those ISAC conversations with a high level of, yeah, we've got people doing this. Yeah, health and we're set up for the wellness. That we're gonna be able to say, okay, here's, here's the ISAC quote, we ride that for a year. Then, then it's our, our year to prove wellness and get the five percent discount the following year. We could really have it probably a two-to-three-year plan for the budget, which is in the world of health insurance is an eternity. Who knows where it will be in three years.
The number of issues that just of wellness, blood, health can. That alone PSA can just spend off. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you look at a hundred and some employees.
Absolutely. It's, and I mean, I'm, I mean, shoot, this this is what I do every day, our our company. If you don't do this stuff, you you face a surcharge like you were talking about, Mark. Well, I went and did my preventative, well, it was coded not because I've got high blood pressure and they renewed your. I don't understand why, I love salt, no service. But but you get one sideways coding with that. That stuff, I mean, it's been a nine month fight and I I know what I'm fighting, let alone our our regular employee, if that happens to them on their blood work. That, you know, to hell with it, next year I'm not gonna get my blood work done because I got. Was supposed to be free and now it's two hundred thirty bucks. Like, I can get that. I think if we can. If we can get the onsite or or structured to. You know, through through public health.
Lynn, do you have anything to add to this?
You know, it's not just about saving one dollar. By one employee that has an issue that could be resolved because of it.
Lost hour, you know, yeah. How do we look to that then? Uh that that part's. Pretty, pretty simple. We we would implement it for seven one. It'd be part of our kind of an employee navigator. Now we talked with Lynn and Ben on.
It should be mandatory. Seven hours they have to attend.
It'd be great, you know, we, yeah, we've got the ability to 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 put together a pretty. Concise, like, you know, even a three minute video that they could watch, you know, click your phone and watch. I mean, this is a positive, you're gonna. You're gonna get a hundred bucks, the county's paying for it.
Well, they will, we we we, if they have to make sure we report that they have, then they get. If they don't, they're gonna get charged. It's kind of like the.
They they watch it, but. Like reading the handbook.
Three minutes compared to thirty hours.
But, you know, if we if we'd organize something with public health, like I I do think there's a big enough carrot. With the hundred and most people. Know they, you know, I should I should get my blood looked at, you know, and if I'm gonna get paid for it. Might as well do it.
So it's not to because they know there might be issues, that's why they're not ignoring it. That's why you ever end up with these situations.
Insurance is a hard thing to explain to a lot of people. They they don't.
That's right.
They like to have their hand held and and I I I can. I get that, I mean, their minds are elsewhere. They just wanna have somebody else do it for them.
And the statements are always so behind, you know, you can't match it up calendar wise, you have to wait and see.
Well, and that kind of leads into our second. Which I, you know, just based on my math, and I don't know what you've done, Ben, I don't see that being a negative to the side fund. I think we're. I see it.
I think for much majority of employees and. To the side fund, it's you have negligible impact. Cause either you're someone who. Never goes to the doctor or you have enough trips that you're gonna get to that out of pocket max anyway, and so all those people it has zero effect on. It's just the people who are in the middle and have maybe have. Little bit more claims, but not a lot. That might have to pay a little more upfront, but once you get to the whatever we decide, the four hundred or five hundred or. Thousand if your family or eight hundred or whatever it is, then.
That's my impression to it into those to the. Ten percent of the people that may say. This costs me. Hundred bucks or something like, you know, in hindsight is always twenty twenty, it'd be like, well. Your out of pocket is lower, so what we've done is. Is protect you from the. That really bad year. You've got some protection.
What would mention, I think actually Mark Paul had mentioned it when we were here, when you were here the first time, is if we. Take the out of pocket and give them a little more protection there, sort of go like four hundred. Eight hundred. But take away the twenty percent coinsurance, they know that they get they're getting a little something for what they're giving up.
Exactly, and I can definitely, you know. Sell that, like, that's it. That's gonna be better for for more more people, like, can you find a case? Or so and so would have been better off. Well, exactly.
Well, I think people say, well, once I reset. You got eighty twenty, I don't understand how much of that they made paying still, it's not free.
Right, right.
So when you look at the math of it, it's like, well, I'll make it more understandable. And what it creates them actually to go to the doctor because they realize, well, I mean. Yeah, this is gonna be on the county anyway. So it'll be healthier overall, I guess that's the goal.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's an actual quote on that one, so they could make a motion today to enter the. Uh critical illness policy and we could start getting them put into place. The deductible out of pocket question, you could change that at any time, so if you wanna make a motion to. Change that, I mean, it won't affect our rates, won't affect any of that, it's just how we're splitting up that first. Few hundred dollars.
Does it, does it save us anything by cutting off paperwork?
It doesn't, it's the the claim, their their work at at Midwest Group Benefits, it it is. Easier, but it's very similar to HSA. Plans and and there's a lot of their work is duplicate claims. Coding issues, like they they put the time in on. Like it technically, it's all automated on the on the claims part till it's till what.
Till something's wrong.
Yeah, till the data's. The automation's wrong.
The detail of that.
Yeah, yeah. But I do think. It'll be a heck of a lot easier for our employees to understand and that and it being neutral. Budget, why, you know, to the side fund, I'd say I'm in favor of that, I think that'll.
And I personally would like to give it a week so I could read through that in more detail.
The the critical illness, uh huh. Yep, I can send.
I'm just seeing that thing for a second, not even seeing it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would take way down the action.
Yep, people action. You send that to all of us, Brian.
Yep, do you want the? Full packet or the the best three pages?
Best three pages. And I wonder what that looks like going into an unknown. Time in our history where, you know, bird flu and measles and things. And anti vaxing can really change what our health will look like in the country. And how would this play into that?
Probably none of those things are listed there, so it's not gonna affect that.
That's a good question.
But the complications from it might. Some of those. Well, Brian's gonna give us that information.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll list the action on that next week. Okay, do we wanna talk, do we wanna talk about or? Have more conversation on the four hundred, eight hundred?
Is that um you. You're proposing is four. The incentive to.
If you go to just, right now, the maximum out of pocket is five hundred a thousand. And if you just say we're getting rid of the co insurance and just gonna use that as the deductible, well, then you're gonna have more people. Playing, cause they are losing, there will be some people who lose a benefit. But if you say four hundred, eight hundred, it's a. We're gonna maybe lose you a benefit on those first thousand dollars of claims, but you'll save some money at the end, so. So I think it's an easier way to sell it. And it makes it way cleaner, I mean. Lynn can attest that there's hardly a week that goes by that somebody doesn't come in with, here's all my E O Bs, help me figure out what I'm supposed to pay. And this will hopefully make that a lot cleaner.
Without question, you're gonna pay the first four hundred. Or the first eight hundred and you're done versus. They get all these bills. I I am in favor of that.
I mean, today's world, four hundred dollars.
That's a great plan, yeah, we get, we get great, great insurance.
If it can make it less complicated, it's great.
You wanna act on that part today, I mean, if everyone already agrees on that part, then next week I'll just list the critical illness policy.
I'd say this, I moved it to four hundred, eight hundred dollar pocket.
I second that.
Eliminate the eighty twenty.
If a motion is second to eliminate eighty twenty and implement four hundred, eight hundred. Further discussion. If none, all those in favor, say aye. Both same sign.
When would be, what would be effective date of that July one?
The transition year, some people will already have gone over the. They already hit their five hundred thousand, so they'll not get the benefit of it. Till next January, but that's when our plan year switches, so.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Lynn, you want?
Whatever you can, I have it. You mailed it to Lynn and I, or at least me.
Okay. I'll have Lynn scan this, just not that the other pages are bad, but it's there, they're canned. That's the reason. You guys have a good day.
Next on the agenda is uh MUP, ITI's G I S Director of the Coffee Print Contract.
Right, got a couple of things that have your contract and then also we'll talk about the non strike. Uh basically, the state's uh partnership with us, so. Uh like to introduce Jeff. Jeff is with Rico, we've been with Rico actually for seven plus years, I actually believe.
Uh this goes back before that, before my time too, so again.
And we used to have where different offices or buildings had separate contracts, so we might have had. Some people with Rico for twenty plus years were, but. I think when we put it all together, the first time was about seven years ago.
So anyway, I'd like to recommend that we continue to work with Rico, basically, I've. Kind of left you some information here that you can take a look at. We basically are our clip rate is dropping or our cost per print is dropping. And we've had a really good relationship with Rico, um this whole process has been. Challenging, I'm gonna say that, cause we've had. Four different vendors come in, look at our environment, propose different things and. Just when I get ready to make a decision, then, you know, somebody comes in with a slightly better offer. And that's what happened here too. So and I think we're we're kind of bottom. I think we're to the bottom of it, though, because, you know, right now we're spending less than we did. Um on our previous contracts and the big thing for me is implementing what we call e fax. And Rico comes with an extra piece called Secure Send. Which instead of just being into the fax, you can actually send documents. Uh more securely and have people sign things and send them back and forth. And so my goal is to maybe do less faxing, uh because the Secure Send is actually a better product. And so.
Especially for larger amounts of data, uh where some of the healthcare and veteran stuff, I think it's law enforcement, yeah.
Right, right now, in a. HIPAA, a document that may have personal protected information, you can't email it on our current system legally. So that's why we still have some places using fax, some of the offices using fax. So um this would be a way to have secure emails, so you could legally send those back.
Yeah, we got to got to looking at some of the accounts and. Saw some faxing sessions lasting, you know, an hour, trying to send a hundred fifty, two hundred pages, so it's a. Full client file and just. It too costly and too time consuming too, so. Anyway. Anyway, probably need a motion because this is such a, this is a sixty month contract, so we'll need a motion from the board. And then we'll probably follow up with Dan because there's multiple documents to sign here.
Yeah, I personally wanna thank the county for working with us and um. Enjoying the opportunity to continue.
I would motion to accept contract with Rico.
Second.
The motion is second to accept the contract with Rico, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Suppose same sign.
This one is for we get to keep several of the machines.
Right, and we actually lose them, right. So we actually are are keeping, so for a dollar, we buy. Four bigger units and then all the smaller units, uh the little laser units, and since we have a. A whole closet full of supplies, I mean, we should. That might last us. We might last, you know, a couple, a couple of years.
So the target of where we're gonna put those extra machines, like recycling and.
Conservation, recycling, maybe some of the shops. Shops are always a dirty environment, so they. Tend to wear out faster there.
But if you have a closet full of. If you have some ten and you, well, and even if you have ten smaller printers and you put. Five of them out, you have five extras you can replace in a year or two, the ones that. Quit working rather than fixing them and.
It keeps it keeps the click rate, it helps with the new copy click rate to to. Kind of move those. Their own like that, so.
Perhaps the engineer will be able to keep the shops more upgraded.
We're talking, we won't like that I say, but I'm glad we're doing the Rico contract. However, I think county needs to look at saving paper. And what we do in other boards that we're on, we have laptops and all the supporting documents are in the laptop, you click on each one for the agenda. And it would just say, oh, my.
Because a piece of paper is more than a black and white click. That's kind of changed over the years, yes. Um and with this fax solution, um what happens on the other end, we don't. You guys don't care about, but on this end. Um it should allow you, if if you do the right things, not to print these large faxes, they can come in as a PDF for. Something sustainable.
And many, many times you get a. Ten, twenty, hundred page document, and there's only one page that you actually need to. Print out, so you could look at the PDF and get the one you need that needs a signature and. Do that one rather than getting the whole thing.
And then someday. We can have it accessible for every meeting to the public, so they can just click on the links too, so they see the supporting materials.
One of the biggest problem with that is a lot of times we don't have some. Yeah, we, I might have the smart supporting like I have the. Budget for public health, but I didn't have the handouts that Krista had until she got here. So I couldn't.
Yeah, we won't ever get to one hundred percent. It's a a goal.
Well, I've attended meetings where. There's a stack of agendas and there's. Six people in the room and you could just easily have it up on a screen as to print it out the agenda for that. And likewise, you can toggle back and forth between. Lots of different things without printing paper.
So we need the county need to. Work towards that as well as.
Yeah, that's where you save money on printing is.
Printing in black and white rather than just.
That's something that I've mentioned when they're setting up the new machines, is have them all set up to default to black and white. And if they want or need color, then they have to intentionally choose that. Cause it is almost ten times as much, you see there.
Yeah, the ratio isn't bad, you know, countywide, it's not a bad ratio of black and white colors, so. Very few things need coloring.
A lot of times you'll have one. Hyperlink or something that's blue on a page. So that ends up triggering color and then you've spent ten times as much per page that you printed with that and it didn't really matter.
Well, let's move on to the CrowdStrike MOU, memorandum, memorandum of of understanding, so. As you're aware, uh we've been working with the state for almost two years and their endpoint. Protection software is called CrowdStrike, and so we have that installed on all of our devices, servers, all the way down to. Workstations and laptops and basically they continuously monitor. Uh for things like viruses and malware and things like that. Uh we have a dashboard we can log into, we can see where we're missing security updates and patches. Uh, we have a dashboard we can log into, we can see where we're missing security updates and patches. Uh, and they also provide a, what they call a NOC, uh, twenty-four seven support, where, um. They're monitoring our systems even when we're not here, and so, and this happens from time to time. And typically, it's a false alarm, but, uh, when they call us, um, we take it very, very seriously. Because it could be somebody trying to break into our system. They basically have MOUs with almost all the counties and most of the cities in the state of Iowa. And the reasoning for that is because all the cities and counties work together so closely. Even if one entity were to be compromised, it would spread very, very quickly. So, we're very fortunate, probably saves us about ten thousand dollars a year, and gives us a lot of features that we couldn't provide on our own. So, um, there is an MOU that Dan will have to sign, or Chair will have to sign. This is basically just an annual agreement now, uh, that covers our cooperation.
Authorized signatures right there, if they pick action.
We have a motion in second to accept the MOU for CrowdStrike endpoint protection, is there any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Who carries your hands?
Right, thank you very much, and Dan will catch you after the meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to stop up your.
Yeah, there's half a dozen sheets that need to be signed.
Thank you. Every time I caught one of our Rico machines, I still always wanna. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, if we have a copy, then I'll give you this. You want me to just scan it?
Good morning.
Not quite back on schedule.
Can you hand this over to Ben? That's, that's the updates to the, the budget, you'll see in a reply email that.
Okay.
I replied to why you were. Meeting here, um, I have the secondary road budget as submitted to the, uh. DOT. We have to go through the DOT submit, uh, supplemental first, thank, it's. My is a couple of updates to the Excel spreadsheet that I sent out earlier, it's the same as what I'd sent out before, within a couple thousand dollars, so it's nothing. There's, uh, nothing major of the, the. Mine hasn't sort of changed, where I just gave it to Ben, so that he could update his sheets, so that was submitted this morning.
To the DOT.
To the DOT.
So after they approve it, then it will come here for action by.
Right, right, exactly, this is my, my, um. Weekly meeting update, right? If we give, we'll go through that real quick. Uh, unless she counting the bill grant, uh, nothing has changed, I talked to the, um, DOT last week. And they said it'll be a couple of months probably before we know more, and, um, the amount of funding they give out. With all sorts of different stuff going on. Uh, the increase or decrease, we'll see. Uh, railroad flatcar bridge, other than one email, I haven't done much on that, subdivision data, um, I'm starting to get behind on that, so I. Really gonna push to get that, working on that sooner rather than later. Union negotiations are this week, twenty-sixth is on Wednesday.
Two o'clock, correct?
Yes, I think we're meeting at one thirty. Um, Ridgeway shop improvements, the boiler, boiler installation, uh, is operational, they're tweaking it as we speak. Maintenance activities for twenty twenty-five are still being coordinated, uh, we've seen a couple of emails in that regard. And it goes hand in hand with the union negotiations, um, the, then, uh, that was a couple more supervisors. Couple of different times about long-term staffing strategies, uh, we'll meet again after this meeting. Um, job openings for the secondary roads superintendent have been received, uh, we received ten applications. Seven in-house, three out of house.
And that position is not a union position, so they don't, the in-house ones don't have priority or preference, like they do in our union.
That is my understanding.
That's, I'm sure that's why that's.
Yep. Uh, Nasty Valley campground construction plans, made a couple of different, uh. Just talked back and forth with, with conservation and, and, uh, urban engineering. On that, uh, Bridge one twenty-six, we sent permitting out last week, um. Had a regular performance meeting on Monday morning, talking about, uh, some of the summer activities that we have planned, a couple of things. And then, uh, I finally got around to meeting one of the shops last week, and I met with Ford Attic shop on Thursday afternoon. So, that is the report I have for today, I hope it's do to prove, I don't wanna get fired. But, I don't know.
What's it look like with what, with everything melting?
Uh, I haven't been, I haven't been out since it started, since.
It's just soaking the moisture up there, it's.
Yeah, on, on one sixty-fifth, I think it's, they think it's dry enough to throw some rock on that, that first inch and a half rocks, so. We're trying to get ahead on that.
Never even, so.
Not that we're completely in the clear, cause you could get snow, ice storms yet, but how would like our ice coming?
Ice control piles are still.
Salt and sand are still, are we gonna have trouble hitting our eighty percent salt use?
No, I don't think so, it's gonna be, we're a lot better off than we were last year.
Last year you, we had trouble using it, so we ended up stockpiling it over.
Switched out the sand and the salt to make it fit, so, it's still in the, the big pile, so. We have room, but it's not, it's not ideal still.
Not that those are problems we ever wanna complain about.
No. Yes, correct, so.
It's surprising how good the gravel looked when I was driving on gravel yesterday. Amazing, few wet spots, but very, very few like it does.
Okay, yeah, the, the idea that they, that it was so dry and that this is just kind of replenishing it, makes sense.
What's kinda surprising is how that, that section of W fourteen from Spillville to Ridgeway, the striping is. Almost obliterated by the asphalt. Paint, almost painting over the top of it, it really did not hold up well.
Yeah, I, there's, I, I drove that the other day, and I was.
Do you think it's time of year, that was when it came, was down, or?
I, I. It looks, it looks, yeah, I, I'm a little bit, I'm not, I'm with Steve on this one, when I drove it. Uh, on my way down to Fort Atkinson, I said, we should. I wish it would show a little bit better.
Somehow it soaked in or moved into the rough surface more and isn't.
It is the first coat, so.
Except for you hit some laps, you can see exactly where they.
Uh, well, we haven't had anything contracted yet, the, we'll be doing striping a little bit different, so centerline striping, um, we're gonna do. Every other year, uh, north of Highway nine, uh, we'll do centerline striping then south, and then we do quadrants for the fog line. So, that's something that we kind of worked out, uh, a couple of months ago, I didn't report that on that, but that's, that's the intention and then.
Well, then, if that one is, if your quadrant is up this year, will you still have that one done too, just to get another coat on that?
That whole rotate, let's just, that was a big picture, just a decision we made, we haven't, we haven't worked with any contractors on that, so. W fourteen isn't our crosshairs to get a fog line on it, I know that, so that might be a special situation regardless.
Plus, it's gonna be two quadrants, so it would be, and your dad isn't gonna be the only road breaker.
Yeah.
Cross cod quadrant, so it'd be kinda weird to.
So, again, how that exactly plays out, I'm not sure, but the, the rough, that is a rough idea, maybe we. Eight, eight forty-six is hardly a dividing line, make it more, you know, I haven't worked out the exact details on that. That's the intention.
Dust control, people can, when they start applying for dust control.
I don't remember the, the days, actually, there was an email sent to the, to the board on that, uh, the individual who sent that out. Is, um, he's asked about this before, and I've looked around other counties, and our policy is consistent with other counties. And to be honest with you, it takes, it puts all of the, uh, liability on the, uh. Dust control operator and not the, the residents or the county, so it's kinda the best that way. And we wanna maintain it that way, so, he's saying it costs him a lot more, he's just gonna have to pass that on to the. To the customers is, is, is my take on that, so.
There is one thing about that, that is supposed to be from the driveway, which necessarily isn't always the place that the owner wants the dust control.
They can set that up and arrange that ahead of time, so that is, that, that is. It's worded in the policy that it's, um, three hundred feet, uh, is it three hundred feet or four, anyway, centered on the. Um, driveway, but arrangements can be made with the county.
That says that right in the policy.
It, it says that, I'm pretty sure it says that somewhere in the policy, I know it's been worked out before, whether it's in the policy.
I know, I have that situation, but it's not near the driveway.
Yes, and if that's the case, you'll have to, you'll have to work with the, um. The applicator to, to actually put it where you want it, and, um, yeah, that's just, it is, it is allowable to do that, but it's not.
So, and we are the only county that makes the applicant like the stakes.
No, that's what I'm saying, we are not the only one, no, I, I mean, Chickasaw County, I think Howard County is very similar.
Thank you.
And, and, um, I can't tell you what Almacky's, but, uh, this is not a, this is not a unique situation. And then. And his question about magnesium chloride, we already allow it, so. It stays that right there in the second heading, so, just wanna make sure you're aware of that on that email.
Thank you.
Um, it's not, not a real big deal, but it's just something I, I had not followed up on, we'll find back, but I. Let everyone know here, that's, I had come up that. Another, another thing on the shops, you said how to keep the shops clean. Uh, well, actually, I, I did have an idea on that, um, just, and I have, I'd probably work with some public health people, but, um. One of the things you can do on that, keeping those shops clean is an ozone, uh. Ozone, it attaches itself to particles and lets the particles settle, settle out faster. Um, it costs a couple hundred bucks, I don't know how much area they, they take up, so I haven't, I haven't done that. I kinda looked into this a couple of weeks ago, cause we were having a couple of issues, so. I am, I am looking into how to make those, uh, shops cleaner, so to speak, and easier to. To, on the tagging equipment, so to speak. So.
Are you moving forward to that soil stabilization, uh, plan that you were?
It's in the budget, so yes, uh, we have, I have, uh, in our, in our, um, rough calendar. I have the soil stabilization, I think in July, um, there's a lot of things going on with, uh, B thirty-two and everything else. Um, and I, I talked to the Fort Atkinson folks, I said, if you guys can just put your, all of your planned. You know, uh, vacations and everything in, in late June, July, August, that, rather than in May and June. That's gonna be a, uh, help us out getting, getting stuff done. Um, cause right now, if we look at typical calendars between the middle of May. And the middle of September, we average about fourteen out of the ten, ten, uh, blade op. Ten truck drivers and twelve blade operators, twenty-two people, we have averaged fourteen people working. On any given day during those times. So, we are, those, that, that.
Down is, basically you're on down on average at thirty if you're workforce.
Correct.
Have you considered a policy, an HR policy within the Department of First In, First Approved?
Um, I have.
You know, I could, during this period of time, I could, we can work with this many people, but not this many people.
I have definitely considered it, um, it's not ready to go, uh, on that. What I've done, and I, I've emailed this out to the board, um, I'm looking for special projects, projects where our guys. Would be easily more competitive than a contractor on things, to try and get them, you know, overtime and work with them on their schedules. And try to keep the guys, so I'm trying to do that kind of, uh, uh, an incentive based way. But yes, it is on my radar list of long-term things to do, because it's.
Uh, when obviously you want them, you want them to take their vacations in the summer, cause in the winter, you've got. We've got needs that we don't always know, I mean, you don't know when the snowstorm's coming, so you gotta. Don't take vacation these weeks, while maybe then there's no snowstorm, and everyone's like, oh shoot, I could have taken vacation, but.
Right, the thing is, is I want these guys to take their vacations, what I, what I. And I, and I want them to do that, because that's one of the benefits the county provides, these workers, uh, this, this, even, even this, insofar as the flexibility. This year, we have a lot of maintenance activity going on that are kind of, I'll call it more unique as far as I can tell. Uh, with this May-June timeframe, um, it's not every year, we, I feel this much, well, it's not every year, we're gonna be. Uh, doing this base stabilization like this, um, and if we start doing more of the base stabilization, that's gonna be a. The scheduling's gonna be part of my job to, to make sure it's done the right times, so.
Do you think it's likely you'll go to the four tens this summer?
I, I've, yes, I'm gonna say that that's not even a question at this point in time. Um, mostly because that work, the four tens works much better with this proposal that I, I sent out, so. Um, yes, four tens and, um. I might go a little bit earlier, uh, and, and later with it, just, it depends on kinda how things play out. These union negotiations and things going forward, so, towards, there's.
I mean, you have the authority to set that, so if you wanna do it for some shops and not others, or you wanna do it for when you do it, or whatever, that's here.
Yeah, I would be hesitant, because that's, that's a morale issue. I mean, obviously, um.
And you, you don't know, that his, it used to be in their contract, and so every year, they would have to request. Kind, the union would have to request it, and then it would come to the board of supervisors, and they'd have to vote on it to approve it and all that, and. Where we just got that out of the contract, and it's the sole authority of this engineer, and that's what I was trying to point out, that's you get to decide, so you don't. Whatever works best is what you wanna do.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a union item anymore.
Right.
And, uh, that's probably a good, that's a, that's a real good thing.
Yes, it used to be kind, and it was almost a, the board would use it as a. Tool for, for either punishment if they didn't like something, or, yeah, that's right. And they were using it more as, we aren't gonna do this, if you're gonna do, be, be that way type of situation, it's like. This isn't, we should only do this if the engineer thinks it's appropriate, and he should have the authority to do that, so.
The guys like it, it makes sense from a timing standpoint, um, what I, the, the issues that it brings up is. Is longer time away without, I call it supervision, um, so. Are they really working the whole time? Well, we have GPS, keep things monitored, there's questions and things like that, so. Um, and then this whole incentive idea is, I'm trying to find some, some workers who will work and, and, you know, try to get, uh. You know, a positive work attitude within the, in the crew. Try to get uh, you know, a positive work attitude within the, in the crew on that, so.
Did you get that sent out to the union up?
Yes, uh John sent that out, I think it was on Friday, so.
If we're taxes, a good no cost benefit.
And I'm, I'll just bring it up in the board meeting, cause uh I can, and we're already late anyways, um. Just, I heard, uh, you know, if we have a good summer, I'd, I'd like to, you know, reward the guys, kinda like uh. Like Fayette County has done, where there's kind of a day off or something like that, just like, you know, we got all our stuff done, I'm kind of an incentive based person. I heard about that, I was like, oh, that's, that's something I would like to do for the guys, so. You might hear me, but you might hear that request later on in the fall type of thing, where we can get some stuff done, so.
Going back to base stabilization, is that basically in essence, a form of dust control? Is it the same chemicals they're using, or?
No, well, um so to answer your point, I think they do use some magnesium chloride for dust control, and that can also be a. Uh base stabilization at the same time, but magnesium chloride is a dust control first, base stabilization second. This is a stabilize the base first, and then a tertiary benefit is the dust control, and it's not nearly as good. Um that's just, it should reduce the dust.
So get more so that you're stabilizing what's underneath, which if it happens to. Keep some of the dust particles down in the process, that's great, but that isn't the point.
That is at the point, and and you kinda have a little bit of blading as it goes naturally, so there's always gonna be a little bit of future dust at the top. It, it'll work underneath the, 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 the top layer, though you will, you're not gonna be, it's not dust on dust on dust.
So if somebody does dust control, and then you do base stabilization, is it gonna interfere with the dust control?
It, well, if we, the, we might, we might have to knock out the dust control work, but it will be a better situation. Um for everybody involved, um uh for a longer time, because. Following, cause there's two applications, first of all, second of all, um the. Uh just the amount of dust that is created uh on a base stabilized road, and I, I don't have any working knowledge of how much it is. Everybody says it's, it goes down significantly, just that, don't, it's not like a fresh application of. Uh lignin sulfate, let's say, it's not the same, it's not gonna be the same amount of dust control as that, but lignin sulfate wears out anyways. This, this is a far more permanent situation, you know, if you have a dry spell during winter, you get dust. It won't, it won't be nearly as dusty in the winter, things like that.
Point is, if somebody does dust control in June, and July, you come back and put that on, is that bladed in and disturbed the?
I don't know how to answer that, sorry.
Then you come back and blade everything in. If that's how you'll play the stabilization, it kind of. Dust control.
Dust control is always subject to our, our, our regular maintenance schedule. So if you put dust control, and a month later, it's completely full of potholes, they're gonna plow, or they're gonna blade it up anyway.
So I mean, I guess the deal is, people should be made aware of where we're gonna apply this, so they.
A hundred percent. When those permits start coming in, that's when we'll, we'll address the, those folks that are on, on the roads. That's one of the reasons for permitting.
Yeah, I know we would get calls otherwise, and hey, I put that on, we're not using.
Yeah, it's not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be, uh, you know, we're not gonna try to call redneck our way through this, we're just.
No, I just want everyone.
We're only doing one test plot this. Yeah, and the primary, one of the primary benefits, Mark, is the fact that you're greatly reducing the washboarding. From what we saw in the various test plots down in, in Buchanan County, I mean, it was just remarkable. We saw an intersection where they had had to blade it multiple times a year, and they hadn't hardly gone back once a.
Like once, yeah, it's.
The results. And we were not there for real dust probe time, but it was still dry, but there was, you weren't seeing the billowing dust like we see in Winnebago County.
Not only that time, when they file the permit, we have, we, we have to determine the timing as well, so we say. You know, control applicators, don't do this until after we're done.
Yeah.
I mean, that, we have, we have, um, we're part of that session, dust control permitting takes a huge amount of time. And that, that gets worked out, and so I, that's the best way I can put it.
Cause you're gonna put the stabilization down first, and then.
That's the idea, ideal, yeah.
Dust control.
Correct. That's what we would try and do, I did, that's one of the reasons, we kinda want it later in the year, so that we can make sure it's not gonna be wet, cause wet roads. Are not a good time to put it on, so again, it'll kinda depend on the weather, I mean, we're, we're dealing a lot of soft. Circumstances there.
Weather will dictate.
No, I'm not a farmer, but I, I, I kinda feel for farmers.
On the discussion they had earlier about they're gonna, the board's going to try to help. Through Brian, we're gonna try to encourage uh. Wellness, like blood draw, like every year from the employees. Could that be something that you could coordinate with like a safety meeting, when you've got most of your guys in the same place, that you could? Put them through, uh like if you could have the setup.
Like, uh Krista.
Yeah, or somebody at the hospital, or whoever they decided.
Right, but, but someone.
Yeah, that would be a great idea, I mean.
I guess it's a fantastic idea.
Potential plan is that you get a hundred dollar reimbursement for.
A hundred dollar on the spot there?
What it, what it, you know, you could call a safety meeting with a blood draw, and they get a hundred dollars to come to the safety meeting, it's not a bad perk.
It's not. Get your blood drawn after the donut.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have to be careful. It's a fasting thing. Get your blood sugar checked.
But that, we'll see who does.
Bringing that up, because that, it, I mean, it's one thing we set up at the courthouse, we can get a bunch of the people here, but that. We've got shops all over the county, but that's one time when you have the.
Correct, I think it's a good, that is an excellent idea, I don't, I don't know all the, the details on the blood draws and stuff and getting the. Safety meetings here at seven and everything else, cause when certain people can do it, and I don't have that much of time, but. Yes, definitely interested in getting that to work out.
Want anything else for Mike? Thank you, thanks for being so patient.
Yes, I'll just come back here in about fifteen, twenty minutes, perfect.
Just watching, see on the screen when it's off.
Accept and file the upper explorer land audit.
Okay, I only printed one, I didn't print one for everybody, but I did email it out so you could review it, and so. It's just something we put in our perimeter file as one of the entities that we find, that they send us their annual audit each year.
I move to accept and file the upper explorer land audit.
Motion is second to accept and file the upper explorer land annual audit, any further discussion? Done, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, passes unanimous. Next up, discuss the pay matrix policy and exempt employee track.
And I put this on, I didn't know if it's something you wanted to get into this week or not, it's up to you, um. Kind of two separate items there, so from the pay matrix policy, one, one of the points when Tony Phelps talked to you last week is that. We really don't have all of the rules with the pay matrix in writing. I mean, we don't have a policy, this is how these things work, and so, I mean, some of them, like I, when he and I were talking, are kind of. Seems to me that they're obvious, cause the matrix has columns, and they have start and one and two and four and six and. Nine and numbers at the top, and those are the numbers of years of service, so it implied, but maybe we need to say. You know, you start at column A and you. Go up, there was, we did have a policy in place when we put the pay matrix in, that had to do with how we converted existing employees. Onto the pay matrix, but that was a one time thing, that shouldn't be. Um anything we need to worry about anymore, cause once it's in place, it's, you know, you move through it. Uh the other thing that gets a little more is that when we have a policy. We have it in writing from the original pay matrix that we have before the current one, about what you do when someone is promoted. So you move them up to the, using their current salary, move them up to the new, um. Their new pay uh uh role or uh pay scale, and then you push them up to the next spot. So they get a, they get a raise to the next, whatever the next one, cause the old number might not line up as one of the new ones, you put them up to that one and push them up to the next one. But the discussion was that technically, uh Jeff going from the job he was at to the new job was a. Demotion, because he went down in pay scale, but we used the same process, so we put him down while taking his current salary and putting it on.
Was right, because.
It moved him up several spots, so.
All those overtime and.
And that was, I don't think the overtime should have been included, it should be base salary, but that's, the overtime is. Outside that, but that wasn't what was done, so, so he got moved down, which moved him over columns and then put up another column after that. So. Actually, ended up moving him two columns over, because he, you took overtime into consideration, so he got.
Yeah, if we're gonna keep this pay ma- matrix in play, we definitely need to do something with policy, be a little more.
I think, I think a, a explicit policy, like in that one, we need to, it was never outlined anywhere of how overtime is. Considered, but that I, I never would have can, put that into the consideration, I would have taken the base. And that isn't what got done, and so there is definitely need to get some of these rules into writing, and. Between Lynn and I, we can probably do, here's what we've been doing. And you guys can look at it, see what ones you agree with, or what ones you don't agree with, or if we've missed any, because. We don't, you don't normally typically have too many demotions in the course of a, we are normally moving people down. Pay scale, so that's maybe something we wouldn't have thought of to put into the, into a policy anyway, had it. Had we written it ahead of time, so.
I was just gonna say, they're going, this really highlights.
And, and we have between. What we had written when, in the whole, we did actually have a policy in place with the old pay matrix, when we had that paid for that one. It came with a written policy of. Implementation and, and promotion and those kinds of things, and so. And between using that as a template and using our H, our attorney that we have on call, we could probably do it. Now, I don't think we need to wait till we have the H R attorney or H R person on staff to do it, I think we could put it together and have her review it. But. Cause we do pay Holly from uh Lynch Dallas is used, is I, Lynch Dallas is who we have the contract through. Normally Andy contacts Holly, court three, I think, is her, as our contact, but. Any of, we, our contract allows us to utilize any of their. Attorneys if we need more different attorney to look at something, but, but we do have that in place to help draft this if we need to. So that's first one of the items there, and I, I do think it's probably, I think that was um. Of Tony's comments, that was the one that was glaringly obvious, that we do need to have this all in writing, how this is gonna work. And, and, you know, he also pointed out. That you have made exceptions to policy to put people not at the starting. Column, and so whether you want to continue to do that or not, to have the policy in writing to begin with, is kind of the first step before you can really make an exception. You should really know what the policy is, so.
Yeah, a lot of good points. Most of going back to H R person could have, otherwise, we're just leaving it up to. Good intentioned people in different departments to try to figure it all out and bring it forward, and, you know, you need that one consistent person to. Monetary policy better, otherwise, it's, turns into. Favorites or, you know.
Right, well, I mean, neither, either Lynn or I have any formal H R training, and there are. Quite frequently trainings provided by the Auditors Association that have to deal with H R matters, cause in. Many smaller counties, it's falls on between the, the county auditor and the county attorney to deal with these things, so. So we get a lot of. Discussions and informal trainings on H R topics, but none, none of it is. You know, certified or formalized in that way, I mean, there are some of the trainings we've been to, there was an H R conference we used to go to. In January that was put on, and people who are, are certified in H R. Um H R jobs or certifications could have paperwork that. If they attended the conference, or certain, certain of the presentations, they could fill out paperwork to get continuing ed credits to help renew their certification. So in that respect, we were sitting through the same type of training, but that.
Which are telling you that you don't have SHRM certification.
Right.
Well, it's.
So we do the best we can, but I. begrudge anyone to think if we wanna get that, I mean, the biggest problem is can we afford it, I mean, that's the. But if we want to get someone on staff to do that, I would have no harm getting rid of those duties to someone else to be there.
Cause right now is, you know, okay, the committee or somebody works on it, and then, well, who's gonna, you know. Who, who's even like gonna respond to people with applicants, or the non-app, the non-interviewees and the follow up with that? Let alone then, who brings forward, this is what it is, and then it's like, well. Here, who the attorney, then there's more contribution, and it's back and forth, back and forth, and it loses. It loses itself.
There's no continuation.
Right, and so all of a sudden, it's like, well, where was this started, or is it?
Why even that, the most recent one, but Jeff, what I, the first report I got had a different salary number than the. Second report I got, which then was, was still maybe different than what you would have put into place had you all discussed it ahead of time, so.
Sounds like, well, being a salary person, you can't bring uh overtime, I mean, uh. Dump time, uh, there is no dump, so anyway, it's like. That's, one person needs to be able to figure all of that out. I did ask Ben when I seen that number on the sheet that morning, where this number came from, since that's what they negotiated.
You know, I mean, even Lynn's comments today about onboarding and even using employee navigator and getting all of those things done, doesn't happen.
I mean, it happens, but it.
Not in a re, not in a meaningful.
Training sessions and, and things like that, you can all be taken care of.
And, and I do think, moving to a yearly, somebody gets a compensation listing of here's your wage, here's your. Retirement, here's your, all the different benefits that come with your wage, so they see the total value of what county is providing for them. On a yearly basis, really would keep, I think, people less aggressive about, well, I'm not getting, or I should be getting, or they're getting, and I'm not. My friend is doing this over there, the different organizations, like, well, look what you're really getting here.
And the same, even the issues of safety, you know, whether or not we're actually keeping good records of who's being trained on what equipment and the rest of that. I'm sure within secondary roads, they've got, they've got a system, but we've got other departments that have similar, similar things, and. I don't know for sure that we have proper record keeping.
Speaking of which, we need to finish updating the safety.
Yeah, we haven't done any. Yeah, we haven't done any work on that now for six, three months, cause we've, it's been other things.
Again, the HR could be a driver.
Yes, well, yes.
Yes.
When the safety committee was originally formed by the Board of Supervisors, I wasn't on the safety committee. And intentionally I was likely to get this, but then over time, as people have left and somebody needs to coordinate meetings and so on. And so then I ended up helping with it.
We'll probably rebound that and just get it done.
Yeah.
It's kind of like this matrix policy right now. We don't have an HR, so I think Ben's idea of giving us some history on where the policy was. Something in deploy, and I mean, if it has to be changed going forward, so be it, but with nothing there.
It was a starting point.
We need, we need guidelines.
And then get to Lynch Dallas and get it reviewed.
Then look at it, yeah.
And something like that too. If it's in writing and it's there, it's like when you're talking to an applicant, say, here's what it would be. This is, this is it.
Instead of an interpretation of what you think it should be. I think that's where we got a little messed up on that one, but we're not pointing fingers. The second part here was the employee tracking.
Yeah, exempt employees. And this is something I think that doesn't really have a effect on the employees themselves. We make a note here on this thing, a matrix policy to get starting one. So this has to do with exempt employees don't report how many hours they work in a week. That's, it's a very explicit, an exempt employee, who is an exempt employee is governed by the Department of Labor through the Wage and Hour Division. And we had, when we did have people who did our pay matrix, it was Condry. When part of, part of what we, our contract with Condry was not only setting up the new pay matrix, it was writing, rewriting and formalizing or getting all of the job descriptions in the same type of format. And then another part of it was reviewing, making sure that we have people that are exempt, marked exempt and not treating someone exempt that isn't. And so that's, that's actually the most dangerous. If you're treating someone as an exempt employee and they aren't supposed to be, that's where the county can get in a lot of trouble for years of back wages and things. So, so that's, you know, and then if you're not in a hurry, I mean, that comes out of the whole in certain industries, people, they would take people and say, okay, you're an assistant manager. Now you're going to be exempt and we're going to make you work sixty or seventy hours a week and not have to pay you overtime anymore. Well, that's why they have these very explicit rules about who can be exempt. So an exempt employee does not report to us how many hours they work in a week. Because if they, it's, these are your job duties and you get them done and however many hours it takes. If it takes thirty hours or forty hours or fifty hours, that's, that's your job duties. And so we don't report those in, in hours in, at any point, except that in our current system, when we're tracking their vacation and sick time, we have it tracked in hours on our computer system, just because that was the way we inherited it when I started as auditor. And so I think Lynn and I have looked at the computer system. It'll take a little bit of education for the exempt employees, how they'll see it on their pay stub. Cause it'll be basically an eighth of what it was showing before, just so they know it's now saying, being reported in days rather than reported in hours. But I think it would be more appropriate to report their vacation and sick time and therefore family sick time all in days off rather than hours off. Because we shouldn't really be looking at hours. So, and that would help this whole, there, I mean, one of the things that Tony had pointed out when he was here was people who had to work thirty five or forty hours a week. Well, if you're an exempt employee, that isn't really a comparison. Because as we know, always some of those people that maybe their office is open thirty five hours a week, that doesn't mean that they're only working that. Cause they have duties that they may absolutely late or work through lunch or whatever it is to get, get the job done. And so, um, that would be the, the fixing on those. It doesn't affect any of the hourly workers. And there's only, I put in that email, the list of who is an exempt employee, and it's pretty limited. It's mostly, it's our department heads that oversee, uh, people or, or there's other categories that have to do with IT and other professions that are also exempt. But Condry or, uh, yes, Condry is the one that verified who's exempt. And so we wouldn't be changing anything on who we're considering exempt. I'm just saying that for those people, we should track their paid time off in day increments rather than hour increments. Cause if they get done on this Friday and they got their work done for the weekend, they want to take the afternoon off, they just leave. They don't report to us that they took, that they left, cause that isn't the way it works. It's more, I'm going to take next Friday off, so then we take one day off of their vacation, cause they, that's how they report it to us.
So for clarification for public even, courthouse deputies are not exempt. No, they're hourly.
They're hourly. And, and we always report things and salaries and so on from a, for, you know, cause the person wants to know what their annual salary is gonna be and so on. But anyone who is not exempt by the, the Fair Labor Standards Act, they are an hourly employee. No matter how we talk about what their salary is, if we, if they have a salary that we talk about, we have to divide that by, and we don't even just divide it by twenty eighty, which is the standard. That's fifty two weeks at forty hours a week. We divide it by how many working days. So sometimes there's a hundred and sixty working days, but sometimes there's two hundred and sixty one working days, two hundred and sixty two working days. So we're dividing it out to that, that detail, um, to figure out what their hourly rate wage is. More questions? You have a question, Ling, in luck?
Well, I was thinking about Well, no, it, it still goes back to thirty five, forty. And when people make the comparison, oh, they're making this much over there and make the assumption, oh, everybody works thirty five hours a week. Well, I think that's probably going to change going in the future. So are we going to be prepared to change going in the future? And if the assessment was done at an hourly wage.
Right. And I think that's a completely different discussion from what I'm talking about here. That's, that's a whole other discussion that you, we could discuss.
Because it's just, it tails on to thirty five, forty and
What you're, what you're basically discussing is the, the tracking of the benefits.
For these, whatever it is, twelve or ten or twelve people in the county, that we would just track them as, uh, days off rather than hours off. And I, we would, I guess, we would suggest for like TJ and Jim Alstead and, uh, and Sean Snyder, that we do switch theirs as well, but it would, it'll really be up to their separate boards, if that's what they want to do. I mean, maybe they don't care, cause they, it doesn't really affect their benefits.
So let's still keep track of hourly time away, but
Just days away.
Just days away.
Yeah.
So if they went to a doctor's, what came back at
We, we can, we could do what I, Lynn asked about that, about like a doctor's appointment. I mean, they don't technically have to report that. They could just go to the doctor appointment, not report it. If they want to, we could do it up into two hour increments.
For hourly people, they could just go.
No. Just exempt people. I'm only talking about exempt people. Hourly people are still hourly.
Technically, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So an exempt person wouldn't have to say anything. If they want to report, they're going to go to a doctor's appointment. We could track it down to two hour increments, cause we could do quarters of days. So if they want it to be tracked.
But they're under the definition of an exempt, they're paid to do a job.
Yes. They wouldn't have to tell us if they're going to a doctor appointment.
Pretty small work. We just go to the doctor's home and get your job done.
Surely right of complication.
Yeah.
More red tape.
Okay. Good with that.
You want to, I, I guess, I would like an action by the board if you want me to proceed with switching this, cause I don't want everyone to say, well, why are you doing this to me? You know, even though I'll, I'll try to explain that there isn't actually a change in their benefits, but I don't want to be the one making the decision, so.
I move to begin tracking exempt employees by daily, not hourly.
Thank you all so much.
Have a motion in a second to track exempt employees by daily?
By days.
Days, daily. Instead of hours. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those polls, same side, motion carries now. All right, go to the bottom. I got a question quick. Uh, Food Pantry was asking to give the key to the fire department. Uh, the more I thought about that over the weekend, I thought that might possibly be a good thing for the security board to look at.
Security, security committee, that would, that would be fine. We have a master key for the courthouse, um, buildings at the law enforcement center. I think they have like a box where you have to put in a code to open it, to get the key out. So they're tracking who's using it and for what reason. And so I don't know necessarily you need it, they need it specifically for the fire department. Maybe someplace at dispatch, wherever those others are kept would be the best. Like it's cause it might not just be for fire, it might be, there's flashlights in the windows, you know, law enforcement should go down there, whatever it is, you know, we cover all of those situations, but yeah.
I would support moving it to the security committee and have the security committee make
I think they could, and I don't think it needs to come to this, back to the board. If the security committee thinks they, that's a good idea, we just do it.
I wasn't totally opposed to it, you know, I heard that bringing up to us is
I think somebody should, somebody should have
Weekend, I'm like, this, this is probably
We also have the layer of DHS and their record keeping also.
Yeah, so we gotta make it, it's gotta be someplace here. They gotta be held accountable if they take it out, it's
And I, and I think that's why that at the law enforcement center, I know they already have a system in place to do that.
Ain't just hanging up the fire department, anybody can walk in.
With a big label on it.
Yeah.
Help yourself to food, pantry.
Yeah. And I think it'll, it'll also help, and I'm sure the security committee is going to talk about this eventually as we finally get everything settled in there, that we're going to switch the whole keying and locking plan for all of them. That will be down to the two, you know, the two main buildings, but eventually we'll probably be, rather than having Food Pantry has their own key and DHS have their own key and blah, blah, blah. We'll have one system that's more electronic.
All right. Tony, the line something. Consent agenda?
I've got the minutes and claims and the VA monthly report.
Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Uh, what was it? Just, uh, so the payment for the recycling center for the electric, that was
The solar.
Solar.
Okay.
That was, uh,
That's the gross payment, they now have to apply for a grant, the grant. And so most people who, if you or I put it solar, we get to claim a credit on our tax. But since the county doesn't have taxes, we have to create or claim reimbursement through the federal government. So I have no idea what the status
For solar?
It was at least at the time they proposed this. Now in the last few weeks, I don't know what's still available, so.
So potentially
But this is on Evan's, Evan is going, Ben is working with Evan on this.
So Evan will talk with, um, the person at Decore Electric said he's helped other government entities do this or non-tax entities do this. And so they'll work through probably someone at Hacker Nelson to fill out whatever paperwork.
Potentially that will be defrayed by
Rights, right. Cause that would be the goal. That's right. Cause that was part of the selling point is the number of years to make the, for this to be payback included getting that grant.
Oh no. Give it our electric bill out there.
Yeah, the way
It's, it's not gonna take as long as we think.
Then we do, if we could just do with our gas bill.
Maybe we need to convert part of it to electric heat instead.
But you're only producing so many kilowatts.
No, I know.
And as long as they have net metering and you produce extra and you're getting that back, then it shouldn't matter.
No, you don't get the same bad.
Yeah.
No. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those polls, same side.
With the DHS building, Mark and I were, uh, just looking over there the other day after a meeting we had over a recycling committee and looking out at that garage area. And we, our, our question is, can we get some cooperation from those different entities that are using that space? Uh, the idea being perhaps we could take and eliminate and having to go all the way out to Freeport for the stuff he stores there. And maybe we could take the back section of that, which is what's in there is just a mess that you know, you've looked at.
Yeah. We cleaned a lot of it out.
But we still got a
We're getting though.
A bunch of stuff in there that's
What it was, that ways are
Half of what's there, I think, could be consolidated, because people, if people have space, they just kind of flop it here and there and all of it.
There's old wheelchairs there, I mean, motorized wheelchairs that are so far out of date that need to be
So, but anyway, I think we need to call a meeting of all of the entities and talk and stand in there and go like, what do you really use here and whatnot? And if we could clean out that back storage area, then I think Spectrum probably has their records, which isn't even secure, because you can climb over the fence and like
Well, it's geared to what they need it for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's their records, they gotta keep them.
Right.
They're the same, get rid of that.
Well, like, our question is with the amount of space they have and what used to be their file room, why can't they go through and purge records? We'll gladly destroy them and shred them at recycling and then allow that back half of that building. And then suggest that we assign an area to each of those other entities, is this is your storage area. You know, Food Pantry being one that's very important, but, and they, and they use quite a bit of it and rightfully so. But we've got Toys R Us with a section in there full of things that questionable.
Then there's just that whole, it's tools and I don't know what all for a whole fourth of the wall.
Well, that's his maintenance guy stuff.
But it's a lot of stuff.
But Steve, that could be segmented differently, cause we've got stuff that there's a
A lot of it is
And maybe even some of your, most, I, I haven't been in there. But most of the use is wall space. I mean, maybe putting up some shelving or
And we have
There's an actually
Okay.
And we do have extra shelving that's not being used, so we can definitely do that.
But that would help make it more efficient in the way they use.
At one point in time, all of the shelving was being used.
Yeah.
It was quite a mess.
We all have a lot of stuff up.
Yeah, we just, but I think we can do, if we can define to the tenants that this is your space, I think it's going to be beneficial if we can if we can move, if we move Halverson and his, and his issues over there, we no longer have to commute to, to Freeport to deal with those things. And we can also probably get rid of stuff that he has in Freeport, so we benefit in multiple ways of, well, spring cleaning, let's say.
And while we're in, uh, Wednesday is
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, a meeting like HHS.
Hopefully to iron out the last two details. They don't bring up something else, we gotta meet again.
Looking at the gas and heating bill in there, I don't know that we're utilizing ceiling fans properly in that building, cause there's a lot of space way up that there's no fan pushing any of the heat back down. So I think we would benefit by doing an energy assessment of where could we install some fans to get the heat back down to where it's gonna
Well, didn't they do an energy audit?
No, I never saw it.
Yeah, well, we did an energy audit.
Electricity.
Electricity.
But I, you know, you've got a thirty foot ceiling and there's not a fan up there. It's like, how's that heat gonna come back down to where it's heated? You can't Well, that's why installing a ceiling fans to help build that air. Put you a lot cheaper than
I did, I met with the appraiser last week out there at the DHS building on fifty two. And he'd gone through and took the pictures and so forth and everything with, and we gave him building floor plans so that he could have a better, a better handle of exactly what was in there. And, uh, we should be having a response And, uh, we should be having a response from him in a reasonable amount of time. I asked him the question, and this is just a point of conversation for everyone to be thinking about is, when it comes to the point with it, we offer it for sale, which direction shall we go? Are we going to suggest RFPs from local realtors? Are we going to go with an online auction off, option? Are we going to go with an in-person option of auction?
Or hybrid.
Or some hybrid of all of that?
I think you should have a meeting with Steph Brom for sure.
I'm sorry?
Have a meeting with Steph Brom.
I want to have a conversation with Steph about, primarily with who does she have that may be interested in this. But the opinion of the appraiser was, uh, he would suggest as an option that we use a hybrid of online and in-person with some firm that has a fairly good reach. We can put RFPs out there to find out what that'll be, and then there'd be a fee associated with it and an advertising cost, but those kinds of things need to be, we need to consider and start making some decisions on how we will proceed. Uh, and then in that case of an auction, then we'll need to privately discuss what a reserve is for an auction. And that's the point where we make a decision that we let it go, let it go forward at a certain number, which is undisclosed, of course, to the, to the buying public, because we, we need to do that. Or we can take sealed bids.
Like we did last.
Like we did another time. So, those are our options, but we need to, we need to be planning on making a choice and then moving forward with that, because we'll soon have, we're coming into a season by the time, we're, we're at March, by the time we get back and then make those decisions, we could easily be into April. By the time we go through that, we may be a May auction and closing. It'd be nice if we could close it this year and this fiscal year instead of next year. So, I mean, those are some of the things that.
And we've done, um, we haven't done online auction for real estate. They've used that for some.
Purple lanes.
Yeah, for used equipment. And we've done sealed bids like we did for the land in Freeport. And we had a, also had a property over by Fort Atkinson that we sold where we did sealed bids. And then the top three bidders of the sealed bids got to participate in a in-person auction.
You know, we just took the highest sealed.
Highest sealed bid, like we did in Freeport, you know. So, there's a lot of options there, and Andy's kind of outlined some of those. And, and I think at least the last I heard is that there was, we wanted to wait to see what the appraisal was, because I mean, if you're dealing with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar building versus an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar building, might just make you.
Change.
Change how you, how you might want to do it.
I think it would be wise to be prepared that if we do decide to do our own taking bids, but how we're going to advertise it and where the sources are, we're going to place advertisement for that, like what journals, what websites, what, whatever.
We may.
Or paper, probably isn't enough reach.
That's not enough reach, yeah.
So, we need to look at that and say.
Probably legally obligated, because it's going to be, like, noticed. But after that, you have to decide if you want to reach for it.
But I think it's having that now, so we know, well, here's what we're going, how we're going to do that, check with some other counties about, organizations about what we, where we put that.
And the most open process is going to be the best for us, which, uh, and the appraiser did mention that he thought that the, the auction, which is then very, very open, leads to less questions.
Oh, we'll wait until you get.
And I think the appraisers do the, our third or something.
Yeah, it's fairly.
Yeah, so it'll be. We could ask.
Yeah, but and I'll, I'll, I will.
For a week.
Reach out to Stephanie and get some answers this week besides, and we can discuss it further if it'd be next week.
I think Andy's not on the next week's agenda either, so. Yeah, apart from asking him questions, you may have to contact him directly or just wait. Once you get the appraisal and talk with, get a report from what Stephanie Brom says, maybe you have an idea, then we're direct Andy the following week.
We definitely want to get some answers before Andy gets involved in his trial on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
I don't think he'll want to hear from us.
And we're doing, uh, just to sidebar the trial on the courtroom ceiling.
There, that's, we're taking, we're, John's been talking to contractors to try to get some, get some numbers.
And get it done before.
And get it done before the nineteenth.
Uh, committee reports.
Northeast Isle Community Action tonight, Northeast Isle Behavior Health on Thursday.
Hawk meeting today was canceled.
This is the last week for voting for the, we won't be voting on Monday, but the voting, so. But when, was it, was it, election is next Tuesday, yeah? The next Tuesday, after your regular meeting, I'll move the table.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
You're using this one.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the only other thing, anything with the budget discussion?
I'll have a few more tweaks from the last. It doesn't affect your levy rates, but those changes that Michael gave me in the road budget will change the road. And their fund is separate from your, you just transfer the maximum into the road, but that will change those numbers a little bit, because you had a few small things there.
Just a little.
As it.
Little sidebar back to the community service, but there are about at least a dozen eight-foot and six-foot folding tables that are really nice down there. So, if you're in a situation where you.
I actually just bought two more, because I was having, at Good Shepherd, I was having issues, because I have a folding site there and where they keep, theirs were like, you know, fifty years old and really heavy, and they're in a building in the backyard. And so, when Tony and John go over there, the last time, there wasn't someone there to unlock the building, and so, we had to go back. I'm like, I'm just going to buy a couple plastic ones.
And get them back.
These are the heavy ones. These are the heavy ones.
And there were some plastic ones there too.
The front ones are really nice, you know, white, plastic, a lot of grayish plastic.
I would say if you.
Six or eight.
So, know that, that they're accessible.
Yes, if they're, don't pitch them or even put them into the, into the, uh, storage shed. I mean, I think that, and we've got a couple of the eight-foot plastic ones that get passed around between different departments that need them for IT, a lot of times have them, because they're doing a project, so they set up a table with a whole bunch of.
The case being, must be determined whose, whose stuff is what down there. I think we're going to end up, we have tables that we could redistribute as well as leave.
Downstairs, just for those?
Uh, well, no, there's nothing really downstairs here.
Do they, do they, do they community services?
Why even, we have two or three old wooden ones that are in, under the steps, under the clerk of courts, you know, if you go in this, uh, east door, immediate to the right, there's a little room with a spiral stairway that goes up. In that room is a couple of tables already, and especially if you have some easier ones to move, plastic ones. We could put, if you put two or three in there, they would get used.
Likewise, I mean, like you said, we'll find out whose is what, but I think there will be, and we can even keep a couple extra.
Yes, over there, yeah.
Probably need to just to assume also that when we bought the building, we bought the.
We bought what's in it.
Yeah.
In the tour period. Really sorting through some.
So, anyway, there's nice tables.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Yeah, because there's different, recorders have their passport day, they need to go around, trying to round up two or three tables and get things set up in there.
I think we'll be able to provide nice tables.
Okay, that'd be good.
As well as leave some there, because somebody needs some occasionally.
My question was, uh, one or two weeks ago, we all unanimously approved increases for the deputy sheriff's salaries for hourly's. Is there information on that, written information?
There is written information. I think, did Dan email that out to all of you?
I thought he did, I'm pretty sure he did.
I got it, I had the report from Dan, here's the, I can forward it to you.
I'll just go and check emails from Dan, but I don't remember getting it.
Okay, and maybe it was just to me and the two that negotiated. It might have been just the two of you, but so maybe.
Why don't you resend that?
I'll, I'll send it out.
And then, um, just on another note on that same thing, in the future that we discuss in the board, who's going to negotiate on what?
I mean, it was just.
It came up, I know, yeah.
Came up spur of the moment, things going on, we just, yeah. No, I, I'll take the blame for that.
Well, I'm not trying to place blame, I'm just saying, her policy thing.
For that.
Her policy reasons.
It sure was a lot easier than the union negotiations, thank God.
Well, most of you.
Not on most of it, though.
Well, most of you too, Jerry.
Really? It's only two and a, ten after two.
We've been here that long?
Oh, my God. Kind of feels now.
I second it.
Oh, Bushman's second for the government, the owners of the baby, say.
Aye.
Let's postpone for about fifteen or twenty minutes, you need, Mike, I need you to run and run down, and I'll be right back, I'll meet you back here.
I bought a bunch of the east side auction, I ended up with too many and had to put it in the south.
Thanks.
So, one, I still have a couple of names.
Two, I would check, check the Charlie Wilkott, can I do that with you right now? He's the executive director.
I was thinking about the, um, taking it forward in the meeting. Yes. Jeff, I could think of that.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't been asked in the crew, but.
Thursday, yeah, at noon. It's online or in person? If you go in person, we've been to Northeast Isle before.
Yeah.
Connected the backside of the.
Okay.
And if you go off. Right, just a play.
They didn't, okay.
But for board meetings.
The ones that I, I didn't see all of them at the state, but Stephanie, most of them there.
Steve's coming back in about twenty minutes, we'll get in front of you. Oh, okay.
Since then, they've been, they worked.
As you're looking at it, you don't go on the main tour anymore. Go on the main doors.
And we can, see everyone without a word, it's, yeah. Fire truck and everything, yeah.
I often do, I'm like, let us in through the staff.
Let's go.
So, we don't, we bypass.
Uh, there's, you can shut off.